Testing, testing, one, two, three. Testing, testing, one, two, three. Testing, testing, one, two, three.
Good evening, Mayor Lenman.
Mayor Lenman, you are muted.
Let's fix that. I was just noting, Lauren, that we had a few people, I believe, who were on our, are just not on our panelist list, but as participants, who might want to be promoted, Ben Ford, Laura Sparks, as well as Mr. Spalding from Sonoma Water. I'm not sure if he was to be a panelist or not tonight.
Excellent, thank you. We'll move them up.
Well, between you doing that and me remembering to turn on my microphone, we'll get this done. Thank you.
Thank you for letting me in, Mayor.
There's been some kind of change with the security, with the links come out. And they're not working for me, but I think it's on my end, so I'll try to figure it out by next meeting.
This happens all the time to everybody. Nobody's alone in it, and nobody should ever snicker to anyone, because as soon as you do, it happens to you at the very next meeting. That's certainly what I've found. So, all good. So it looks like we have our full crew here. It is six o'clock. I'll ask staff, are we ready to move forward?
Yes, Mayor, we are ready. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Obed. With that, good evening and welcome to everybody for this joint meeting of the Kattati City Council and the successor to the former Kattati Community Redevelopment Agency. This is our Tuesday, March 8th, 2022, regular meeting. So having welcomed everyone, the next thing we move to is I'm going to ask our city clerk if we could have a roll call, please, of our council.
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Sparks.
Here.
Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Vice Mayor Harvey.
Here.
Mayor Lenman.
Here. All right, thank you, everybody. So having roll call, I'm going to take a moment and ask the city manager, if he'd be kind enough to introduce members of the staff that are here tonight to the public.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So tonight we have our police chief, Mike Parrish, our director of Public Works, our director of Administrative Services, Angela Quarter, our director of Community Development, Noah House, our city attorney, John Barker, and of course, our city clerk, Lauren Burches, myself.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Obed. And next, we're to our Pledge of Allegiance, and I'd like to ask everyone to join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you for that. Before we move to our next item, I wonder if I'd like to ask the council, staff, and the members of the public who might be viewing this tonight, if we could all join together in just a brief moment of silence in respect and support for the people of Ukraine tonight. So if you'll join me? Thank you. So with that, we will move now to item number four. And this is approval of minutes and notice of waiving of reading of all resolutions in Oregon since introduced and/or adopted under this agenda. This is an action item. So I'll begin first with council. This is for two minutes. This is for our special joint meeting on February 22nd, as well as our subsequent regular meeting for February 22nd. And I'll ask if there's any corrections or additions to the minutes. Not seeing hands from any of you. All right. So with that, let's see if we have any attendees for public comment.
At this time, we have no attendees.
And I am seeing zero as well, so we will move then back to the council. And if there's no further discussion, I'd like to see a motion.
Move to approve the February 22nd meeting minutes for both a 5:30 meeting and the 7:30 meeting.
Second.
Thank you. So that's Vice Mayor Harvey and a second by Councilmember Sparks, I believe. All right. With that, I'll ask if we can have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks.
Yes.
Councilmember Ford.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harvey.
Yes.
Mayor Lenman.
Yes. Thank you. So that settles that. So we are now to item number five tonight, which is announcements. So bear with me. I have a few things I need to read to you. We'll begin with our meeting orientation for new attendees and viewers. In conformance with the Brown Act and the adopted city council rules, the meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items, where the city council will consider the item, and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes a citizen's business item, which is the designated place on the agenda where citizens have the right to say whatever they wish. The city council may or may not choose to respond to these comments, as the government code allows. However, if the city council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as giving credence to or agreeing with any statements to the city council or its members believe are incorrect, misinformed, or purposely biased. Next, measure us for its police services, a variety of recreation programs for all ages, and the maintenance of our streets, parks, and public buildings. You can see details on the web at kattatycity.org. Next, citizens interested in receiving City of Kattati community alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up with Nixle. And you can do this by downloading the Everbridge app from either the iOS or the Android app stores, or by just texting your zip code, 94931, to 888777. And finally, like always, we really do love to hear from you, so please feel free to contact the city at 707-792-4600, or at info@kattatycity.org. If you have a non-emergency issue after normal business hours, you can still contact us at 707-792-4611. And of course, if you have an emergency, please do contact 911. You can continue to look for updates on the city's website and our social media channels available on Facebook, Instagram, Nixle, and Nextdoor. Next, we move to item six, which is proclamations. We actually do have a very timely and very important proclamation tonight for the American Red Cross Month. And I'd like to read this first. I'll ask staff, do we have a representative present tonight by any chance from the American Red Cross?
We do. Natalie Henry with Red Cross has joined us tonight.
Excellent. Well, I'm going to read this proclamation, and I'll ask Natalie if she has any comments she'd like to make. So I begin by saying, this is a proclamation of the city council of the City of Kattati for the American Red Cross Month for 2022. Whereas, in times of crisis, people in the City of Kattati come together to care for one another. This humanitarian spirit is part of our foundation of our community and is exemplified by the American Red Cross volunteers and donors. And whereas, in 1881, Clara Barton founded the American Red Cross, turning her steadfast dedication to helping others into a bold mission of preventing and alleviating people's suffering. Today, more than 140 years later, we honor the kindness and generosity of Red Cross volunteers here in the City of Kattati who continue to carry out Clara's life-saving legacy. They join the millions of people across the United States who volunteer, give blood, donate financially, or learn vital life-preserving skills through the Red Cross. And whereas, in the City of Kattati, the contributions of local Red Cross volunteers give hope to the most vulnerable in their darkest hours, whether it is providing emergency shelter, food and comfort for families devastated by local disasters like home fires, donating essential blood for accident and burn victims, heart surgery and organ transplant patients, and those receiving treatment for leukemia, cancer, or sickle cell disease, supporting service members and veterans, along with their families and caregivers through the unique challenges of military life, helping to save the lives of others with first aid, CPR, and other skills, or delivering international humanitarian aid. And whereas, their work to prevent and alleviate human suffering is vital to strengthening our community's resilience. We dedicate this month of March to all those who continue to advance the noble legacy of American Red Cross founder Clara Barton, who lived by her words, "You must never think of anything except the need and how to meet it." We ask others to join us and us commit to give back in our community. Now, therefore, the city council, the City of Kattati, does hereby proclaim March 2022 as Red Cross Month. So we encourage all citizens of the City of Kattati to reach out and support its humanitarian mission. So with that, I wonder if we could open to comment from our Red Cross representative, Ms. Henry, tonight?
Thank you. Hi, my name is Natalie Henry. I'm a local leadership volunteer with our Red Cross chapter here in Santa Rosa. I want to thank you all for declaring March 2022 as Red Cross Month and for highlighting our shared efforts and dedication to building a safer and more resilient community together. I'd like to highlight our home fire program. It's one of the things that we can do locally to support each other. It's a free service, and it is the most frequent service that we provide here at our local chapter. Unfortunately, every day roughly seven people die from home fires, and many of those are children or elderly people without those functioning smoke detectors in the home. So Red Cross has made an initiative to make sure that we get out those smoke detectors. So feel free to reach out to our chapter at any time if you or someone you know needs those services. We're also highlighting an event that we're doing next month in April, which is part of our Home Fire Sound the Alarm event. It's a signature event that we do every year, and it's nationwide. The goal is 50,000 homes made safer by installing smoke detectors and providing free fire safety information and helping families to create fire escape plans. Again, for more information, please sign up for this upcoming event or contact your local Red Cross chapter, which is located here in Santa Rosa, or go to soundthealarm.org. I again wish to thank the City of Kattati and its citizens for their onboarding efforts to remain focused on safety and resiliency building. We appreciate this council here tonight for inviting us to speak and for declaring March 2022 Red Cross Month.
Well, I will speak for the council in saying it's our great pleasure to have you here and support you. And I'll take a moment to see if we have any comments from any members of the council. And if not, and not seeing any right now, I will say that we appreciate your work. It's all more evident as we look at the world today how important it is. And I wonder, those two programs you mentioned, if we could ask the city manager if we could share links and some brief information, at least from those to the public through our media channels that might be helpful to the Red Cross and helpful to the citizens of Kattati.
Absolutely.
Excellent. So with that, since we've just discussed this, I'm going to take a look and see. And I'm seeing nobody else on the attendees list, so I'm not going to open public comment with that. So with that, I will thank you very much, and we will move on to item seven, which is the approval of the final agenda. This too is an action item. And we'll begin by asking the city manager if there's any changes tonight?
Thank you, Mayor. No proposed changes.
All right. As I mentioned, I'm seeing no attendees, so we will pass through public comment then and go next to eight, which is citizen business and public comment for consent calendar items. And I'm gonna take a moment to read a little information about this.
Mr. Mayor, if I may interrupt you for just a second?
Please.
I believe you have your video turned off.
I'm not sure how that happened. Thank you. I have my strip of video channels set so I can see you guys, see your hands be raised, and so I could not see myself. So we'll see if we can set this like that. So thank you for that. Yeah, I'm not sure how that happened. But that's not, that wasn't the plan, so. All right, so we were at moving to citizen business, and I do have to read some information about that first. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any items listed on the consent calendar or any matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to City Council Policy 2021-01, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor may extend the time limit for a reasonable time where a disability combination has been requested. So let's jump back up here and look at our participation list. I am not seeing anybody. I will confirm that with our city clerk to make sure she has nobody who wishes to speak.
I have no attendees.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. So that takes us then to consent calendar. We have one item, which is item A on the consent calendar tonight. And I'll begin by asking if we have any council member that wishes to pull this item. And I'm not seeing any hands raised. So with that, then, I would look for a motion for consent from somebody.
Move to approve the consent calendar?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Harvey?
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Ford. Thank you for that. We'll ask for a roll call vote, please, from our city clerk.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
Mayor Landman?
Yes. Well, thank you for that. So let's see. This takes us to item 10, which is direction and future agenda items. And I'll ask the council if we have any future agenda items to bring forward tonight. And I am not seeing anything at the moment, so thank you for that. So this brings us then to our regular agenda. And our first item, which is 10A, which is excuse me, 11A, review of the proposed Sonoma County Water Transmission System budget for fiscal year 2022-23. And I'll ask for the staff presentation, please.
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, Craig Scott, Public Works Director, City Engineer. I will do a quick introduction and then have Lynn Roselli, who's with us from Sonoma Water, make the primary presentation tonight. Just as general background, the city receives wholesale water from Sonoma Water. And we have representation on a body that's comprised of contractors that also receive wholesale water. And we have a water advisory committee, which is represented with Vice Mayor Harvey, and the alternate is Councilmember Sparks. And then there's a technical advisory committee that meets every month, and the WAC, the Water Advisory Committee, meets every other month. So every year, the Sonoma Water presents a draft proposed budget. And the TAC has a subcommittee that meets in January, February of each year to review the budget and ask questions. And it's an iterative process whereby we get to a point where everybody hopefully agrees to the draft budget, and that gets presented to the full WAC at their April meeting. So that is so for this year, it's very similar to prior years, the budget subcommittee of the TAC met a couple of times in February. And if you see in the agenda packet on page, I had this all organized. Let's see. It's the attachment, the first page of the attachment. There are a number of revisions made by the water agency to the budget to make those adjustments. So with that, I will let Lynn take it away.
Thank you, Craig. So am I able to advance the slides from the screen? Yes, I can. Okay. So my name is Lynn Roselli. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Thank you for having us. Thank you, Craig Scott, for participating in the budget subcommittee. I am the division manager at Sonoma Water, and Jake Spalding is the finance manager. And we have prepared this brief presentation for you on the 2223 proposed budget and rates for the water transmission system. For those of you that are not familiar with Sonoma Water, we have a number of enterprises and functions, and we provide services to the community through all of these functions. Today, we will only be talking about the water transmission system. The water transmission system budget, revenue, expenditures are not shared with any of these other functions. So we just wanted to be clear about that. There is no co-mingling of funds among the different enterprises at Sonoma Water. So the budget we're presenting you today is strictly for the water transmission system. The budget is based on three primary aqueducts. And the City of Kattati is on the Petaluma Aqueduct, which is the blue line in the lower left or west corner, southwest part of that map there. And so the City of Kattati pays the rates and for the budgeted expenditures on that specific aqueduct. As Craig Scott mentioned, we engage in a collaborative process. We appreciate the input that we get from the Technical Advisory Committee Budget Subcommittee. It requires a lot of work on their part to understand our our budget, but we are happy to hear the input and do what we can to make adjustments to our budget. The Technical Advisory Committee voted yesterday to recommend unanimously recommend the budget to the the Water Advisory Committee. We're making presentations to town councils and city councils on request. The Water Advisory Committee will vote on April 4th, and then we will take it to our board for adoption on April 19th. These are the various parts of the, these make up the budget. So the operations and maintenance, the sub-funds, and they have the functions that are shown there as their title suggests. The biological opinion work that you've probably heard a lot about is in the watershed planning and restoration fund. We have the five capital funds. And the City of Kattati pays for only the capital work on the Petaluma Aqueduct and then storage facilities and common facilities, which are common to all the water contractors. And then we have various debt service funds too, which have helped pay for construction of many capital projects. So we're gonna go through some of the budget items fairly quickly here, but happy to answer any questions at the end. Hazard mitigation projects make up 3.2 million of the budget. There are six projects listed here. Five of them are seismic hazard mitigation projects. One is a flood mitigation project. The first three are under construction, and they all have offsetting grant revenue, which is very important to moving these forward. Then we have other capital projects. Two of note are the Sebastopol Occidental Wells, the rehab of those wells, and the Aquifer Storage and Recovery Project, and then the Todd Road Well, doing some re-source automation and disposal improvements there. We have offsetting revenue for those projects. And those are critically important for the water contractors to provide extra water supply reliability during the drought. So when we add together these capital projects along with this hazard mitigation projects, we get a total capital project budget of 13.3 million. And then we move on to the operations and maintenance budget, and there are a number of projects in the budget. The two that have been deferred for the longest period of time and are in the most need of being done and not deferred further are the cathodic protection project on the Santa Rosa Aqueduct and the Russian River Kattati Intertie. And the City of Kattati is actually on the Kattati Intertie. And the tank recode program, we have 18 storage tanks that store more than 128 million gallons of water, and they are in desperate need of being recoded. They're extremely expensive. Between the cathodic protection and the tank recodes, that makes up more than $12 million in next year's budget. And going forward, we will probably have between $9 million and $12 million worth of O and M operations and maintenance-related improved recodes and cathodic protection to protect our system and keep it functioning well. And then we have a number of studies that we are doing. Some of them are water supply related. Some of them are more related to seismic hazard mitigation. And so our O and M budget is 38.7 million. And then the sub-funds, we, the budgeted expenditures in the sub-funds are primarily under the watershed planning and restoration fund, the biological opinion, Dry Creek Habitat Enhancement Phase 4 is anticipated to go to construction next summer. Twenty, I'm sorry, this summer, 2022. We are cost-sharing the construction of this with the core. The water transmission system pays 35% of the cost, and the core is carrying the 65%. And then the all-important water conservation program has a number, has a couple of grant-related programs that it is implementing, and the water conservation team is working very hard on drought outreach and education. And it's never been more important with this, with the drought and the lack of rain. We're getting this winter, which is very concerning. And so when we line item out all of these expenditures and compare it to this fiscal year's budget, we get a total budget of 71.83 million, but that is offset by 15.31 million in grants, use of fund balance, and bond proceeds. The operations and maintenance is related to the tank recodes and the cathodic protection. The capital projects is largely because of the the production wells coming online for the drought. And then the biological opinion compliance and water conservation is Dry Creek Habitat Enhancement Phase 4 and water conservation outreach and education. And then debt service is increasing because we have the, we are issuing 2022 revenue bonds to pay for the capital projects to help bring, smooth out the rates and bring the costs down. And we are proposing to issue $15 million in bonds to help do that over the next three years. And this is a pie chart that just shows the allocation of the different elements of the budget. You can see here that operations and maintenance makes up more than 54% of the budget. And it's the most difficult primarily funded by rates. And it cannot be funded by by bonds, and it cannot be, and operations and maintenance typically is not funded by grants. There are some, let me go back for a second. There are some studies where we might be able to get some grant funding, but in large part, operations and maintenance is really funded by rates. So we are taking the capital projects, and we are funding the capital projects with both the fund balance, bond proceeds, and grants. And then for water conservation, we also have some grant funding there. And then on the biological opinion piece for the Dry Creek Habitat Enhancement, we're cost-sharing with the core. And then we have the debt service cost, which is 6.01 million, because we are issuing bonds to smooth out those rates over time. And so now we take that budget and all of those expenditures, and we move into figuring out how we calculate the rate that we input into the into the table at the end of this, at the end of this presentation. The rate is governed by the Restructured Agreement for Water Supply that is signed by all the water contractors. And it takes the cost of operations and maintenance, divides by the quantity of water sold, and gives us in the math here that shows total cost per acre foot. We have to take the lesser of the three-year annual average, which is on the lower left there, or the 12 months of water deliveries. And so you can see that the three-year annual average is slightly less, and that's what we take. That's what we have to use in this calculation. And because it is a fully volumetric rate, when deliveries are low, budgeted deliveries are low, your rate is going to be higher. And as deliveries increase, your rate is going to be lower. And so here we have the rates broken out by line item of all of the elements that we've just gone over. And the Petaluma Aqueduct, the rate increase is 6.16%. The discretionary charges, as you see at about two-thirds down the way there on the screen, there's the capital charge to build fund balance for future capital projects. The Petaluma Aqueduct customers elected to drop that that capital charge from $20 down to $12. Craig Scott and Sonoma Water and others, others on the Petaluma Aqueduct had many discussions about this, and this was able to bring the rate increase down from 6.84% down to 6.16% for the Petaluma Aqueduct. And so we just wanted to briefly, quickly go over the budget and rate reduction measures that we implemented. We started at a 9.99% rate increase. We believe that that was what we needed to, you know, continue to operate and maintain the system and build the capital projects we need to build. But we came down to 6.84%. And then, as I mentioned, Petaluma Aqueduct water contractors elected to reduce their capital charge to bring the rate increase down to 6.16%. And then we, to get down to 6.84%, decreased our O and M project cost by 1.47 million. We increased the use of fund balance by 2.5 million, up to 7.2 million total. We are doing the revenue bond sale, and that will help smooth out the costs. And we have 4.9 million in offsetting grant revenue that also helps lower the cost, the rates to the water contractors. And it's been, you know, it's going to be a tough year. Deliveries are expected to be low, not getting rain. There may be restrictions on our customers, on your customers. And if the deliveries come in lower than what is budgeted, we will, we will be tracking that closely and cutting back as needed to make sure that we remain fiscally responsible. But the total cost per gallon is .003. And that's probably cheaper than most things you could get at anywhere in the store for milk or other products, even before COVID. And so here, very briefly, is the chart showing our wholesale rates compared to other wholesale water contractors, water providers in California. We're on the far left there in blue. We continue to be the lowest. Most of the others are seeing rate increases north of 7%. And so we continue to try to be as fiscally responsible as we can, yet we are struggling to keep up with deferred maintenance and making sure that we get these capital projects implemented. And just to round out the discussion, once again, we're presenting in March to those water contractors that want to hear from us. And we hope that you can make a recommendation to your Water Advisory Committee member to prepare them for the vote on Monday, April 4th, and then it will be adopted by Sonoma Water's board on April 19th. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Well, thank you for that, and thank you for being here. Again, Mr. Selly, it's good to see you. I'll go to the council for questions. I'd like to start with our WAC representative, though. Vice Mayor Harvey, if we could, just to see first of all, obviously, if she has any questions, but also if there's any comments she'd like to add for our council members.
Yes, I have no questions, but I just would like to highlight a few things that Lynn mentioned. Thank you very much for the presentation, as usual. Lynn, you've done a very thorough job. I just want to remind folks that while this year's suggested budget is 6.16% above, last year, we had an increase of 3.47. And again, they worked And again, they worked very hard to have that as low as they could, considering COVID and the fires and the drought and all of that. But as Lynn pointed out, there are a lot of things to consider and impacts to provide water to the customers. And it's important for us to provide a quality water product to everyone. Impacts to our water supply that we need to stay ahead of, so we are prepared as we can be for the future emergencies. Thus, investments in our infrastructure for seismic events, fires, droughts, and and other conditions are some of the projects that Lynn mentioned on there. So we need some hazard resiliency, that cathodic protection, the SCADA improvements, that tank decoding program, which I thought was very interesting, because basically it takes tanks that have a lifetime of fifty years. And by doing the proper maintenance and this recoding, we can get a hundred years worth of use out of them. So I think that that's a great investment there. While expensive, it's it's a lot less expensive than replacing the tanks. And as we look at some of these studies that we're doing, it's really important that we cover the seismic events and the resiliency so we can deal with these different things like droughts and things, so we know what our weak points are and we can put the investments in a proper place. And last but not least is the work that's being done on Dry Creek. That's been going on for some years. But I can remember in the very beginning, when I first started working with the water, Lynn walked in with these big giant binders about like this, and we were going to have to put a pipeline down Dry Creek. And it was going to be extremely expensive, extremely expensive. And this restoration has been successful. And we are working our way diligently down to the six miles. And in fact, the agency and a lot of folks have worked very hard to work with the Army Corps of Engineers. And it's just amazing that the last few miles that they are covering, sixty-five percent of a share to get that work done. And if anyone would like to go out there and see that, there are tours occasionally, but the work that they've done to be able to restore that is pretty amazing. So I can't wait to hear what others have to say. But thank you for making us have the product that we have for our customers.
Well, thank you for adding to that. I see a hand from Councilmember Ford. Please go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor Landman. Thank you, Lynn and Craig, for the for the presentations. And so I really appreciate all the work that you did to figure out ways to keep the the increase relatively modest this year. I mean, six percent sounds like a lot, but it's a lot better than ten. I get a little nervous about reduction methods like like reducing the capital, you know, our charge for for keeping our capital budget, our capital fund up. So I'm just, I just want to ask for both of you, Lynn and Craig, are are we setting ourselves up for a worse increase in in a future year than? So in other words, do you anticipate? It looks like real costs increased on the order of ten percent this year. Are they going to continue to increase ten percent a year? In which case, we're just going to have to make up this almost four percent that you managed to cut down this year?
So I Ms. Roselli, if I could take a first stab at that. I appreciate that question, Councilmember Ford. This is an area that the Petaluma Aqueduct contractors did focus in on. We wanted to know what the impact of scaling back our discretionary contribution to the capital project fund would would be, would it put any of the current projects in jeopardy? And what would what impact would it have in the long term? There's about eight million dollars in reserve in that fund. And with the Eli pump state, the Eli flood control and electrical upgrade, which is out to bid, or it's it's, I think, planned to be constructed, okay, this year. It does not put that in jeopardy. That's a about two and a half, three million dollar project. And there's a few other projects on that list that Ms. Roselli was and others at the water agency were telling us are okay. I think the longer term, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, Ms. Roselli, but a really insightful comment we got from the water agency was there's a forty-three million dollar aqueduct replacement project in the future out there. And so we were informed we would need about a six percent rate increase moving forward from twenty-three on for for quite a number of years to build it up, to be able to support that project. It's 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 certainly in the out years. And and we don't have a lot of certainty about, you know, the timing on that. But that that was a concern we had as well. But I I think with the near-term projects not being in jeopardy and having time to accumulate reserves for those future projects, that staff felt at this time that a reduction to moderate rates in these very difficult times was warranted. So I, if if you'd like to add to that, Ms. Roselli, please do.
Sure, so that that forty million dollar project or forty forty-plus million dollar project is the Katari Castagna Pipeline. And the thought is that that would be constructed, you know, when there became a a need for greater capacity. And it has been pushed out on the timeline a number of times so far. And we used, we modeled the the water deliveries in the restruct- I'm sorry, in our, from the urban water management plan that shows about sixty-nine thousand, sixty-nine thousand acre feet in deliveries, total deliveries for all the aqueducts by, you know, that time period when we might need to construct that pipeline. We're a long way from sixty-nine thousand acre feet right now. So what we we what we mentioned to Greg Scott and the Petaluma Aqueduct customers is that, you know, if we were at sixty-nine thousand acre feet in the time period leading up to twenty, I think it was twenty twenty-nine, twenty thirty, that if we were at that level, then we would need six percent rate increases. If we were able to get, I mean, we will obviously look for bond funding. We would look for grant funding. And we would look at the timing as well and the scope of work and, you know, look at cost estimates as we get closer. So there are a lot of uncertainties, but we're still within that four to six percent that that we have talked about previously. And we don't anticipate needing, you know, ten percent going forward. So we've done some modeling of, you know, the various projects, and we don't see any significant, I mean, we always recommend, you know, keeping that capital charge funded. It does help smooth the rate. But when deliveries are higher, you get a lot more bang for your buck. And right now, we're not having high deliveries because of the drought.
Thanks much.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ford. Councilmember Sparks, please go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for the very informative presentation. Given that our inflation rate was somewhere around seven percent, and I'm not not sure what inflation you all use for your calculations, but is this six point one-six percent rate increase a decrease in real dollar, you know, real purchasing power, given how much inflation we have, or is it about about even? And and my second question was the large decrease from almost ten percent to about seven percent seemed to come largely from maintenance and operations. Is that mainly deferred, more deferred maintenance or operational cuts? Thank you.
Yeah, it's it's primarily deferred maintenance and catching up on deferred maintenance. We we see that inflation is, inflation has been fairly low over the past several years, but then COVID hit. And then we have other pressures on inflation right now. So we don't know what it's going to be going forward. We were at, our budget is actually at six point eight-four percent, except for the reduction in the capital charge, which brought you down to six point one-six percent. We, it's, we we believe we're we're almost even with with inflation for at least, you know, the next year. And so we're not terribly concerned about that, but we're certainly taking a close look at it. And between inflation and supply chain issues and the drought and possible reductions in revenue, we'll be watching this very carefully. And and if we need to make cuts during the year, we will do that. Did that answer all your questions?
Yes, thank you so much.
All right, thank you. I'm going to look one more time through my list and not seeing any other hands. Let me take a quick look and check our participants list. And again, I am seeing no participants at this point, so that takes us away from public comment. So I'll bring it back to the council and see if we have any final comments or thoughts anybody wishes to share before we decide how we want to move forward with this. And I'm not seeing any hands go up. Wait, I am seeing, Mr. Ford, please go ahead.
I'll just say quickly, seems like a very responsible budget. And I support, you know, I would, you know, encourage us to instruct our representative to support it.
Thank you. Well, let's see. And I see Council Vice Mayor Harvey, please go ahead.
Yes, I just would like to thank the TAC for all the work that they did to get to this point. I know that it's not always easy, and I really appreciate the water agency working with the TAC team to get to this point. You have been really very good at working together to try and keep within our four to six percent. And I think we're pretty close. Thank you for all that work.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Let's see, I'm seeing no further hands from councilmembers. So I'll share my comments. I I'll begin with the same thought as my colleague Vice Mayor Harvey by thanking Mr. Scott and his team for their work this year and actually the last decade, working in a strong partnership with the water agency to try and craft rates that were workable for the public, that didn't have huge surprises, that had funds to allow smoothing of bumps. Because historically, for those of us, I'm thinking of Vice Mayor Harvey and myself, who were here about twelve years ago, this wasn't always the case. And it's a much better place, I think, for the people of Katari, a much better place for our council, and I believe a much better place for the water agency, this place we've arrived at. And we generally have worked to have kind of an agreement of hitting somewhere between four and six percent as a target range for usage for the agency, for the deferred maintenance, their capital projects. When you compare this to the regular, what do we assume? Two point five percent generally for cost of living increases with things. This should be adequate for such a large agency generally to handle these things, at least spread out over time. Which is why when I read my packet this week and took a look and saw we had crossed six percent, it was only with the greatest of efforts. I hear we started at ten percent, worked back down to almost seven. And thanks, Mr. Scott and his team got it closer to our agreed happy space. I was really pleased to see that, because I think that that is something, as I said, it's been very successful, and I would like to see that going forward. Appreciate the use of fund balance to help this. I recognize that some projects can't be deferred all the time. At the same time, I noticed that we had a huge increase in maintenance projects, and I wasn't really sure how many of them had to go forward, though. But thanks to the Vice Mayor's comments, I'd be happy to support this tonight. I think her experience working at the WAC and knowing full well her interest in providing the best bargain she can for the people of Katari, if she's supporting this, that does move me. So I would just leave it with that thought of, I recognize that last year, the agency kept those costs really low during COVID. I think it's not unreasonable to see they might bounce up a little this year. I'm fine with that. I would like to see us get back to our normal range. And in the future, if we do have to look at a ultra-expensive aqueduct replacement project, then obviously we'll need to really have some detailed information on what that capacity is required, balance that against what appears to be a declining supply of water in terms of ongoing drought and hopefully not a long-term change in weather patterns, and to see the true need for expansion. But with that, we have tools to deal with it. So that's a long-winded way of saying, I support this. And if there's no other comments, I'd be happy to see a motion from somebody. Perhaps our WAC representative might be appropriate. Wait a minute, Councilmember Moore, you have your hand up. Please go ahead.
No, I think I'll go ahead and let Vice Mayor Harvey make the motion, since this is her bailiwick.
Would like to make a motion that I have direction to accept this budget.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second for direction. With that, I'll ask our city clerk if we could have a roll call vote, Ms. Please.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
Mayor Landman?
Yes. Well, thank you for that. So we have our direction for our WAC representatives. So that completes eleven A and brings us now to item eleven B on our regular agenda.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for being here. Best to everybody at the agency. We look forward to seeing you next year. So our next item is, as I mentioned, eleven B. And this is a resolution condemning the Russian invasion of Ukraine. And I'll ask it to City Manager if he has any comments beyond what's in the resolution.
Really, just real quick, note that this resolution was intended to show support for Ukraine and also condemn Russia's invasion. Most recently in twenty twenty-two, but also the invasion and attempted annexation of Crimea starting in two thousand and fourteen, as well as the ongoing funding of proxies in the Donbass, the eastern part of Ukraine. The thought is, is, or my initial thought is, is that if the council does want to authorize this resolution, then I would most likely be providing this to representatives, but obviously open to direction on where you would want this to go if the council does approve it. So that's it.
Well, thank you. So I'll go right to the council and ask if we have any questions for the city manager on this. Not seeing any hands go up. Let's take a quick look at our participants. And I'm seeing no one on the attendee list still, so with that, I'll bring it back to council. Yeah, I think there's not much to say about this. Wait a minute, I do see a hand from Councilmember Sparks. I will note that the hand color you have is very close to the color of your wall, so I have to look closely. But I see the flag right below the hand on your door there. So I'd love to hear your comment. Please go ahead.
Thank you. I'm I'm just wondering, as a follow-on to this resolution, if there's any way to communicate to Calpers that we would support divesting from Russian funds and so on.
All right, I'm seeing no other questions. I'll ask staff, we have any, I know that there are both political actions from the municipalities in this county moving forward to ask Calpers to divest from fossil fuels through Calpers. Councilmember Sparks, I would not be surprised if this happens there. I know there's also, as we talked about a couple of meetings ago, legislative, I can't remember, it's an assembly bill or a senate bill. I think it's an assembly bill coming forward, asking the same thing. So I expect to see this from the assembly. But I I would agree with you, it's something certainly I'd be supportive of as well. And if it does come forward, I would like to see it here. I assume you would like to, too. And if it does, I will make sure to get it agendized. Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Landman. You just addressed what I was going to address. I believe Governor Newsom has requested that Calpers and Calsters readdress their investments currently dealing with Russia. So thank you for that clarification.
That's good to hear. Yeah, I think this is something where almost all of us are of one mind for the moment. It's unfortunate it takes such a terrible situation to put us there, but hopefully we can make the most of that. I do know that I did endeavor to look into what we as a council could do in terms of actually providing real help in terms of support for efforts over there. And sadly, we are very limited legally as per our legal team's recommendation, at least about actions we can take beyond simple symbolic ones, which to my mind is unfortunate, but also logical. So I just did want you to know, we did investigate that because that was the direction. Had it been feasible, I was going to suggest to you. But with that, we have this. So if there's no further discussion, I would personally love to see a motion on this.
I'll show more.
Motion from Councilmember Moore, do I have a second? A second from Councilmember Sparks, thank you. We'll ask our city clerk for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Landman? Excuse me, Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
Mayor Landman?
I was wondering what I had done wrong. Yes. So I believe that's unanimous. Thank you very much, council. So that concludes our regular So that concludes our regular agenda night and moves us now to item twelve, which is our city manager's report. Mr. Obed?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So a quick update on ordinances. Last night at the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission saw the initial draft of the multifamily ordinance. It's a action from our current housing element. And also the agricultural ordinance, the so-called agricultural ordinance to allow additional, you know, more agricultural activities in residentially zoned areas of the city. So both of those ordinances did pass through the Planning Commission. And so the next stop is the city council. Either, either the second meeting in March or first of April, first meeting of April. So you'll be seeing those ordinances soon. Also, just on some other just activities going on, we're, our police department is working on the next National Prescription Drug Take Back Day, which is going to be Saturday, April thirtieth, here at the Civic Center. Ten AM to two PM. And if you have any unused prescription drugs, it's a great place to to drop them off. They, they've been very successful. It's kind of shocking, actually. How much, how many pounds in pills you can put together? All right. And then we've also been working with the, our administrative services department's been working with the state on getting funding for our water and sewer customers that are having trouble paying their bills. So working with the state, the city has so far received just about ninety thousand dollars to assist customers that need to, need help paying their water bills. And we've also applied to the state for additional funding to help customers who need to help, have help paying their sewer bill. So that is still pending, but the, but with, at least with the water, we, we've been awarded ninety thousand dollars that we'll be applying to people's bills that need help. And then also just, you know, in case this question comes up from anyone, we do offer payment plans for our customers. And we've been doing that throughout COVID, but we're obviously still doing that. And if anyone needs assistance on a payment plan, they can visit the website or just our administrative services office during business hours. And I think the council knows this, but for, for the public, we have had our strategic planning sessions. And we're, are, we're going to be moving forward with our operations and maintenance budgets and capital improvement program, capital improvement program budgets. And the general fund, general fund study session is currently planned for April nineteenth and the enterprise, that will form the May seventeenth currently. So we'll look for more on that as we get closer. Some potentially good news about the construction, this is Runner Park's construction project at Commerce. Originally, we were thinking that they would not be able to reopen Commerce until June, but what we're hearing from Runner Park staff is that due to the, I guess the, the silver lining on not having any rain is that the construction projects can still proceed. So there, we're hearing that maybe by the end of March, some of those lanes might be reopened at Commerce. So hopefully so to help some of those businesses and also just the general flow of traffic. Because everyone's doing large loops around that road right now. So it's causing little traffic backups in other parts of our city. On the West Side Street project, we, we expect the contractor to be back out there at the end of this week, starting to lower, what they call lower iron, so lower the utility water valve leads and sewer leads and that sort of thing, because they're going to be running big, running big grinders over them. And so you obviously want them lower than the grinders. They don't get, they don't get destroyed by the grinder or picked up by the grinder and flung into someone's house. So they, they're doing that this week and they're going to start on the east side. So that's the John Roberts, Robin, Condor Court, those areas. And and then moving to the west side and starting to lower the iron over there. And so after they lower the iron, they're going to come in with the grinding machines. The plan is next week. So start seeing grinding in the John Roberts, Robin, Condor area first, and then moving over to the west side, sort of following the, the lowering the iron work. Wayfinding signage programs. So the kiosks are, are mostly complete. We're still waiting on lighting and informational panels and some other little details on the signs to come in. Informational or interpretive panels, I'm sorry, interpretive panels are still waiting final approval, as you all know, so that will be installed. And then Pocket Park, we had a workshop on February twenty-sixth and we had sixteen people attend from the neighborhood. So that was great to see that level of interest for that project. And we do have it up on our current Public Works Projects page, which is on the, which is in the Public Works part of the city website and has updated information on this project and on other city projects as well. As well as a slide presentation and meeting notes from that meeting on February twenty-sixth. It's also there too. And then just a couple of camp stuff. So Camp Spring Break, Kattati Camp Spring Break is, is happening, March twentieth through twenty-fourth. And if anyone's interested, sign up on our rec page on our city website. Also, again, another reminder that the SoCo Market will be back in the Plaza Park this year beginning in April. It'll happen every month, like last year is the plan. And then we have a assortment of programs starting up at the Verona Flatty Ranch. So that's also, that's also on the city rec page. And the last thing is, is kind of sad news, but I just wanted to let you all know, unfortunately, and I'm sad to say that, that Lauren will be leaving us after many years with the city. And, and just speaking for myself, I'm gonna personally miss her very much. Miss working with her, I'll miss her sense of humor, her unflappable demeanor for all types of issues that come up throughout the day. And, and I guess most of all, her dedication to serving residents in Kattati. So that's, that's all I got. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. So I will open us to any questions or any comments anybody might wish to make, giving anything that was presented in the report. And I'm not seeing, hi, you're seeing a hand from the Vice Mayor. Please go ahead. And then Mr. Ford, you're next.
I am sad to hear that Lauren is leaving us. It's been many years that she's worked with us, you know, starting in the police department as dispatch and then moving over to City Hall. And I wish her the best, but she definitely will be missed. And thank you so much for all that you have done over the years for us.
Mr. Ford?
I want to echo Vice Mayor Harvey's comments that I haven't worked with Lauren directly for very many years, but she's just been a huge help as I joined that council. She knows how everything works and was incredibly available to help me when, whenever I was lost, which was much of the time. So thank you, Lauren. I'm gonna miss you.
Councilmember Sparks?
I echo my colleague's sentiments. Lauren, I'm gonna miss you. Thank you so much for all the work you've done. And I, you were so helpful while I was transitioning on. And I just really appreciate you and I wish you the best of luck in the future.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Landman. Having worked with the city over the last still thirty, almost forty years, and working with many clerks through the years, I have to say that I, I feel that Lauren has been the best clerk we've had over those years. And working with so many, always patient, always with a sense of humor, putting up with all kinds of frivolous requests from all kinds of people, from council members to citizenry. She's been patient and, and very kind to work with. And I wish her well in the future. And those will be some tough shoes to fill. So best of luck with you, for you, Lauren. And thank you so much for your patience in dealing with us.
When you said frivolous comments, Councilmember Moore, I knew you were talking about the council. And I'm sure all, it's all our city clerk can do is not to smile on camera, but I will.
I will leave that open to interpretation, Mr. Mayor.
I think that's, I think that's more than fair enough. Well, I'm so disappointed that this has to happen at a time where we're having remote meetings, because the one thing we can't do is be together as a group. Take a short break, share a few cupcakes for what we call cupcake fairness in Kattati, an old story. But a good thing to do. And I'll just say that, Lauren, I, I agree, it has been a genuine pleasure for me to work with you these years. This is personally and professionally a loss for the city, but for me as well too, because I've always been able to count on you and I always enjoy my interactions with you. But I am very happy to see you moving forward to your career. Obviously, that's a great thing. So with that, all I can say is best wishes to you and and good luck and, and know that we all will miss you and are wishing you the absolute best. So thank you for your years here. And I know you'll do very good wherever you may go. All right. And I see, Councilmember Moore, did you have something you wanted to add?
I, I did. I just wanted to say to Ms. Burgess, if it does not work out in Antioch, you're always welcome back here. Of course, it'll be at a reduced salary, but that's the price you pay. So thank you.
This is what happens when you deal with a professional negotiator. So, all right. So well, thank you for that. And again, best wishes from all of us, Lauren. So this takes us now to item thirteen, which is city council reports. So I'll just look right at my colleague and see if anybody has anything they'd like to report on tonight. Councilmember Harvey or Vice Mayor Harvey, your hand was the fastest, followed by Councilmember Sparks.
Well, I'll be quick and Laura, Laura can add to it. We had our joint education meeting last week. We had a great presentation from someone about dyslexia and learning. That was very informative. I learned a lot, things that I didn't know. So that was good. We heard that Sonoma State is actually going to have in-person graduation ceremonies this year. So that was pretty exciting for them. And then we did, as we've been seeing on the news, we did hear about their budget and negotiation, things that they have going on. So that's, I'll let Laura add anything I forgot.
Perfect.
Thank you. Just real, real quick, I think you pretty much covered it, but the, the dyslexia presentation we saw also discussed how we are in a, a major literacy crisis right now. There were some pretty alarming numbers for literacy rates. And this is also on the, in the New York Times today, that the nation is sort of experiencing a literacy crisis. And I don't think it's on everybody's radars as much as it should be. So that was a, a great presentation.
All right. Councilmember Ford, please go ahead.
The Russian River Watershed Association met, since the board met since our last meeting and reviewed and approved the work plan for next year, for the twenty-two, twenty-three year. So that should be coming to us at a, at a meeting fairly soon. Lot of exciting projects.
Good to hear. Always glad to hear about our WA. Councilmember Moore?
I just want to report back that I attended the Parma Public Agency Risk Management Association Conference down in Los Angeles last week. And there were some fascinating sessions down there, dealing with things from red flag laws, which I'm sure Chief Barrish is familiar with. Cybersecurity, of course, First Amendment issues that we've been dealing with as well. And then a presentation on insurance and what the insurance industry is looking at. And they are typically have a twenty-two billion dollar global loss each year. In the last couple of years, that's been closer to forty-six million dollars. So the insurance industry as a whole globally, of course, is going to look to revamp, to, to recapture some of those losses over the years. So we can anticipate all lines of coverage from earthquake to property to liability increasing as we go forward. And then they anticipate no major events that, that should level out. And then, of course, during that conference was when Ukraine was invaded. So there, they have no idea what that's going to do to global insurance rates. But it's going to be something we should have to keep an eye on and try to, to budget for going forward. Other than that, it was a great conference. And that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, let's see, I have one thing to share. It's not unusual when we talk about charges for things, we rarely hear them going down. We actually, at least for a bit, we'll see a somewhat of a reduction. At our last Clean Power Meeting, we're looking forward trying to rediscover of what the charges will be able to pass on to our customers will be this year. And historically, I think many of you and the public may know that for most of our years of existence, we were generally not only had cleaner power, and the corresponding PG&E power package, but were usually less expensive. Unfortunately, the last few years, as we've discussed, thanks to the PCIA charge that is charged to our customers to make up for them leaving PG&E en masse, has really been extended greatly, perhaps more so than expected. So we've had a few difficult years. And in fact, the last couple of years, we actually were a couple of percentage points more expensive PG&E, which was not a happy place to be. But it looks like that at least for this next year, we're going to be able to drop back down to not only having remarkably cleaner power, but at least being at an even keel with PG&E. So that's a movement. And that's good movement, because actually, as of a few months ago, we still thought we might be a percent or so higher. So that's that's good. We'll take any wins we can in this world we live in. So happy to share one small piece of good news. I don't know if it'll make a big difference in the bills we all see in our homes in the public, but hopefully it will help. So with that, we are to public comment on non-action agenda items. I will check one last time our participant list. And I'm not seeing any late people logging on. So with that, we have no public content then on comment on non-action agenda items. I'll ask the city manager for item fifteen, if we have any information received after the agenda was posted.
No, Mayor, nothing that's on the agenda.
Excellent. Thank you, city manager Obed. So with that, we are adjourned at seven oh eight. Thank you, everybody, very much. I look forward to seeing you next time. Good evening.
See you all.
Good night.
Bye.
Good night.